2022 county council meeting to order if you'll stand with me for invocation and pledge of allegiance. Let us pray. Dear heavenly father, thank you for your grace, your mercy, and your love. Thank you for the many blessings that you have given us. I pray for your protection and blessings over the people we serve, and that you would guard and protect those in uniform who put their lives on the line to serve us. I ask for your wisdom and guidance tonight as we do the business of the people. I pray that our decisions would be in the best interest of our community and glorifying and to your will. In Jesus's name, amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. At this time, we move to the oath of office for newly appointed board members. If I call your name, if you'll please come forward and meet our county attorney who will issue you the oath. Kristin Kelly, keep York County beautiful at large. Tabitha Jeffries, keep York County beautiful at large. Anne Vialante, Bethel Lake Wiley, land acquisition and preservation park district board. As you make your way to the front, I do want to say on behalf of the council, because we don't typically get a chance to see y'all. Y'all do your business when we're doing ours. Our council really does appreciate the work that you do. You do it without pay, and you do it oftentimes without any thanks, but we do want to let you know how much we appreciate your service. Thank you. Thank you. At this time, I'll recognize our public works director, Eric Reckett, who will recognize Bill Crute, Mel Laws, and Annette Wallace on their service and retirement from York County.
All right. Thank you, council, management, and citizens of York County for providing me the opportunity to recognize these three outstanding York County employees in their retirement after a combined 75 years of service between the three. So, losing a lot here. I'm going to introduce them individually in order of their years of experience. First of all, we got Bill Crute. Bill has been with us for 12 years. He's the assistant supervisor in collection recycling, and he's responsible for the management of all the 16 collection and recycling centers. Bill had a pretty interesting, tough job because he probably had the most direct supervision of employees with 75-plus, all located throughout York County, so he did it well, and did it for 12 years, and is ready to move on. Secondly, we have Annette Wallace Singletary. She's been with York County for 29 years. Started as a custodian, eventually moved to animal control as a dispatcher. Then she moved on to the landfill as a billing clerk, and ultimately was promoted to the office manager there. But then decided to finally finish off her career as the admin assistant in collection and recycling. So, she's had a long tenure here, and it's been successful. And last but not least, we have Mr. Mel Laws. He's been with us for 34 years, all in the collection recycling department. Started in 1988 when the county had over 100 green box sites. So, any of you that have been around that long, you remember that and what that looked like. But he was instrumental in closing these sites and establishing and managing the 16 collection recycling centers that we have now. He addressed litter control issues over his years, and he helped start the recycling program that we have today in York County. And most recently, he managed the drivers and the daily operations of the material recovery facility that we now have. So, between all three of them, they've made a lasting impact on York County. They provided assistance to literally hundreds, maybe millions, hundreds of thousands, maybe millions of York County citizens throughout the years. They've served myself, they've served my predecessors, council, and the citizens respectfully and professionally. It's my understanding that they're now all just going to relax, enjoy time with their families, which is well deserved. So, with that, please join me in thanking them for their years of service and wishing them many happy years of retirement.
Thank you all. We appreciate that. We move now to the public forum section of our agenda. We don't have any public hearings tonight, so I don't have to give you the spiel on that. But what this is, is an opportunity for council to listen to you. It's not an opportunity for us to engage with you. So, if you ask us questions, we won't answer. It's simply a time for us to listen to you. You will have two minutes. One thing I just hate, I absolutely hate doing, is interrupting folks when they've gone over, but I do have to manage the rest of the business that we have tonight. So, if you will make sure to take a look, if you signed up to speak, the top part will start flashing at you, and that will tell you when your two minutes is up. And so, if you will kindly pay attention to that and know when to close your remarks, that would be most helpful. When you come forward, if you would please state your name and give your address. Jonathan Yates.
Thank you so much, chairman, chairperson, I apologize, and members of council. Jonathan Yates, 105 Broad Street, Charleston, South Carolina. Thank you for hearing me two weeks ago also. I understand what the county has been going through. A recode is an amazing process. It's like this huge aircraft carrier, and it's finally coming into port. But what I ask you, and I want to appreciate the time afforded to me by Michael Kendry, the county attorney, particularly as to the communication tower ordinance, I know this aircraft carrier is coming in. It's getting ready to land, but there's some problems aboard. I really urge you tonight, slow down, tell the pilot boat captain to keep the aircraft offshore till we can have it ready to land. The people you serve are the citizens of York County. That's who my industry serves. We have the same client base. The communication tower ordinance is largely a rewrite and a redraft of the one that has worked the county very well for many years. But there are one or two small problems in there that need to need to be addressed. Wireless infrastructure is now what we call the fourth utility. I think everyone behind me in this room has at least one phone on them. Everyone in this room probably used a wireless phone at some point in the county today. We have to get this right in order to serve the citizens of York County. They depend on us as they depend on you. It's close. It's close. But my fear also, as this aircraft carrier comes in, amending an ordinance after you've just been through all this. I know that's a big pain. I would respectfully request that you go ahead, pass the rest of the ordinance, but if we can pull the communication tower section, get it right. Because what we're doing that for is not for me, it's not for you, it's for the room. Thank you all so much.
Thank you, Mr. Gates. Keith Powell.
Good evening, council chairperson and members. My name is Keith Powell with Optima Towers. Address 886 Johnny Dots Boulevard, Mount Pleasant, South Carolina. I've been very fortunate to work in York County for 15 or so years, doing work with Comporium, my own company, Optima Towers, and developed many communication sites. Worked with the ordinance previously that we've had in place, it's worked very well. Understand the rewrite now, the couple highlighted points that Mr. Yates has mentioned do need to be worked on, the vested rights structure, and then the setbacks. In effect, I'll add a little color to what Mr. Yates had mentioned here. By not fixing this setback the way we have mentioned of a setback regarding the tower height and a fall zone, what we're doing is basically taking a lot of properties out of play that would otherwise be very useful and very location sensitive, which our business is. We need to be in a certain place to be able to provide coverage to a certain area within the existing network. So, by adding a larger setback on these things, what you've done is you've basically added an artificial means we're going to have to ask for a variance. And meeting the state request on those or state requirements on variances is very difficult. And so, we ask that you could come back and let us revisit this setback requirements on the zoning ordinance that Mr. Yates had mentioned here, and we would like to see that part of the ordinance changed. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Powell. Joey Dees.
Hello. Good evening. My name is Joey Dees, 1472 Highway 324. Thank you for what you all do and serving our community. I am speaking on behalf of an amendment that I believe is going to be able to come up and recode, and just want to give you a little background of who my wife and I are, Casey and I. We bought 20 acres a couple of years ago. My wife grew up here in Rock Hill, South Carolina, and I have been here. We've been here married together since 2007, but we bought this by the grace of God to use it to serve our community. We follow the agritourism guidelines to have a place that we could use for ministry, for Bible studies, for young adults, for field trips, for kids to be in open spaces, and just interact with animals on our hobby farm. And we want to allow the space to be used for families and churches, for small fellowships. Sometimes there's weddings, birthdays, baby showers that will come up. And we honestly don't anticipate too many big weddings or anything like that, or a lot of weddings, because we're an alcohol-free facility. We like to keep it for families. We've had the opportunity to allow young families have a place to go to enjoy nature and some small farm life for just a little while. And to take these small mom-and-pop venues, per se, away would be a disservice to our community and just a move towards being more city-like where we've all moved to the county. It's not a free-for-all. We both, my wife and I, work full-time in ministry at a local church here in Rock Hill, South Carolina, since 2007. And we simply put the money, the small amount of money we make, back into the farm, to the hobby farm, and to feed our animals, which is, it costs more than the eggs are worth, that's for sure. But we love our chickens. We love our neighbors. My wife was born and raised here, like I said, and we're pretty sure our neighbors do love us. But we love this community. We're not here to see it as a detriment to our community. We want our community to enjoy these places. So, thank you for allowing me to speak. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dees. Dave Oxendine.
Good evening. My name is Dave Oxendine, 2550 Neely Store Road, and I am speaking on the same subject that Mr. Dees spoke on. And I'd like to begin my comments with a quote. "A fad becomes a trend; a trend becomes an industry." In 2016, I was permitted by the county to build a barn. I was permitted by the county and my wife to build a barn. Let me say it that way. So, but our intent was for the cars, boats, landscaping equipment, things of that nature. In 2016, my daughter decided to get married, and she wanted to do it at the barn. Well, needless to say, Facebook and Pinterest took over, and there was many other requests that came to use our barn. So, I was doing some research, and I found that Vogue magazine says that rustic venues, like we have, like Mr. Dees has, has become a quick industry, and even WeddingWire says that there's no slowing down. So, we have a supply and demand problem in York County. If you Google wedding photos or wedding venues, you'll notice that the first thing that pops up are rustic-type wedding venues. In the audience tonight, there's several of the past folks that have used our barn. So, in 2017, when all this started, there were 17 actual venues in York County. I think Mr. Winkler brought that in 2018 as a special exception for use, and the county passed that for a special exception. However, during that special exception process, it was very difficult for these venues to apply and work through that process to become under the special exception. But I want to talk just a minute. I sit on several boards and different things, and I want to talk about the economic impact. Typically, a wedding is $27,000 for an event. That's everything that goes in a wedding. Okay? Not what it costs to rent our barn, but 27,000. So, if you multiply that times 10 or 12, and we only do 10 or 12 events, that's 10 or 12 out of 365 days. 10 or 12 events times $26,000, that's an economic value of $312,000. If there's still 17 other venues in this area, then we're talking about $5.4 million of economic activity. So, I just want you to consider that as you look through the recode. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Oxendine. Steve Garrison.
Hey, I'm Steve Garrison. I live at 3065 Moonlight Road, and that's in District 3. That's in Robert's district over there. I came last week, but it was kind of a chaotic scene here last week. Got an issue in our community out there. I'm not going to name names or addresses, but we've got a drug problem. And I have contacted DEU. I've contacted Robert. He graciously immediately called me back. I've talked with, I've contacted the sheriff's office. This address that I'm speaking of, the sheriff's office, has been there about 37 times in one year. And it's domestic drugs, and I'm just tired of it. So, something's got to be done, and I'm not going to let up till it gets done. So, so far, I've had good response from the sheriff's office. They come on the spot. But the problem is with this COVID thing, as soon as they arrest them, if they're not drug overdosed, if they're drug overdose, they have to take them to the hospital, then they take them to the sheriff's office, and then they're out the next morning again, and they're walking up my driveway. I live on a private road. So, my wife and I coming in and out, you know, we're constantly passing people with backpacks that I've never seen before, drug addicts, and it's got to stop. I was told that I needed to come let you guys know what's going on, so I'm letting you know what's going on. And hopefully, somebody can petition the solicitor. I don't know how much power the solicitor has as far as being able to hold some of these repeat offenders that, you know, four or five times they've been arrested down there and resisting arrest and carrying drugs. And it's just, we're out in the country, and it's a private road. We shouldn't be having to deal with that. Other than that, the trash on 5 and 161, and you guys already know about that, and I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Tricia Conway.
Tricia Conway, Painted Lady Court, Rock Hill. It's an issue that we've had for almost a year and a half with Boats Shore Road. The traffic coming from Ebenezer Park or going to Ebenezer Park. Boats Shore subdivision is a private subdivision, only has one entrance and one exit. It's the same one. And when you are trying to exit the community, whether you're making a right or a left-hand turn, you cannot see any vehicles that are coming down from the park. And when you consider that these vehicles, besides just being cars and trucks, are also vehicles that are hauling RVs, campers, boats, speed, whatever you call those things, you know, their bikes. It's causing a huge problem where you don't know how safe you are to leave the community. And we have children in those communities that we have to take care of. I wrote back, we had a meeting in Ebenezer Park. I can't recall when it was. I believe it was in October. I hadn't heard anything, so on December 1st, I emailed Mr. Mike there, Moore, and told him that we were still waiting on the traffic study. And on the 21st of December, I got a reply from a Mr. Patrick Hamilton stating that the study still hadn't been completed yet, but more than likely, they weren't going to put a stop sign up at Dockside and Boats Shore because it was considered a three-way stop, except it is not a three-way stop. We need to deal with the situation so that people are not armed. And I replied to Mr. Hamilton on three days, seven days later, and to this day, that was on the 21st of December, I replied to him. It is what? Today's the 20th, the 19th of February? I haven't heard anything from anybody. We need to deal with the situation. Thank you.
Thank you. Elizabeth Crippen.
Elizabeth Crippen, 1795 Ferris Road, Rock Hill, SC. Members of council, I'm here to ask you to consider the zoning, the rezoning of 155 Ferris Road, owned by Michael and Julie Delaney. This rezoning request was heard years ago by the zoning committee, and they chose at that time to uphold the AGC zoning for this particular plot of land. The request for the rezoning to RUD would allow a split off of a one-acre parcel of land and completely change the character of Ferris Road. I think Mr. White has been in front of you to talk about the 300-acre tract that he has gifted. And I'm here to support my neighbors, the Delanys, and that they're attempting to do. And I wish for their success, but I also wish to keep the zoning in this area uncompromised. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Crippen. That is all we have for the public forum. At this time, do we have a motion for consent agenda?
Move to approve consent agenda.
Yeah, so just make a motion that we pull out items number 19 and 20 and add those on to new business.
All in favor of consent? Say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none. Consent motion passes. Move to the first item of old business. Council to consider third reading of an ordinance to repeal and replace chapters 154 subdivision code and 155 zoning code to adopt a revised zoning map which renamed certain zoning districts and provides for new zoning districts, to relocate section 154.038 development agreements to chapter 153, planning and development to relocate certain code sections pertaining to tax districts from the zoning code to chapters 35, taxation and finance, to approve the York County Land Development Manual related to the implementation of the requirements of chapter 154, to provide for a public hearing and to provide for other matters relating thereto. If we can, first have a motion to approve, if that's the will of the council, and then after that, have any amendments done separately after that.
I'll move to approve third reading.
Second.
Motion and a second. Need a discussion at this point on that, or shall we move into amendments?
Just for clarification, this is saying we approve it regardless of what amendments are made?
No, it puts us in a procedural posture so that we can now take the amendments one at a time and vote the amendments up or down.
Thank you.
I'll kick us off. I won't be bashful. I'll move to amend Reserve Section 155.765 to provide exemptions to event venue requirements for rural event venues classified as secondary to certain primary uses. In the particulars, as more specifically shown in the attachment here with being presented to council, but which allows a zoning compliance for a rural event venue when a proposed parcel is a minimum of 10 acres in size, is owned AGC, AGC-1, RUD, or RUD-1, and has an agricultural structure on the property secondary to a principal farm or agritourism use, or alternatively, secondary to a primary farmhouse residence where the farm or agritourism structure can be used intermittently as a rural event venue.
We have a motion for that amendment. Do we have a second? Motion and a second. Do we have any discussion? I will just say, since I was the one who requested that we start looking for this, when we first looked at doing the recode, we were under the impression that we were potentially going to have some additional time to work out some of these kinks. We didn't. So, for the last few days, I've been trying to figure out how do we address the situation and provide an exemption that doesn't hold someone who does this business 365 days a year, and that's the sole reason why they built the structure, to allow for the existing folks who have an ancillary use on their property and the barns on their property and limit them. The purpose of this, this actually requires two times the acreage that a special exception requires, so it increases that land mass requirement. It limits it to 10 venues, which is 10 out of 365 days, which would be less than 3% of a use there. It also puts in two requirements and spells out some of the details so that we can allow these folks to continue operating without violation. And, you know, it allows the small farms, the small farms and the mom-and-pops, including some of the others that didn't make it here today, to give them an opportunity to continue to participate in doing this without having the same onerous requirements that a larger, large-capacity facility has. So, I do think that this is something that if council would allow this amendment to go forward, I think it would be helpful, and then we can fix it in the next 90 days and refer it to the zoning committee. But this would at least give us an option to have this in the code to protect those folks, and then we can put that as part of the changes that we make going forward.
And I'll say that since I was one of the ones that, one of the ones that we requested, Allison and I think were really the two that spearheaded the event venue thing in the first place. You know, I thought a lot of what we're adding in tonight was already in the original code when we voted on it, and it seems like some things got left off along the way, or something happened with some of it. So, we're just trying to get that amended and get that corrected to what I originally understood we were doing in the first place.
Any other discussion, Mr. Roddy?
I remember we had something like this come up several years ago when individuals wanted to use their personal property, just like Mr. Oxendine said, just so happened, you know, I have a nice place. People want to have, whether it's kids' birthday parties or wedding receptions or weddings. I have some pause about allowing personal residents to do certain things that we require other people in business to do. Anytime you're advertising the use of your space for events or private event parties or whatever you have, you're kind of using it as commercial space more so than residential. If you're advertising, hey, have your wedding here, have your kid's birthday party here, now you've kind of moved your personal residence over into the business sector. If someone wants to use my backyard to have a wedding, have a nice backyard, sure, why not? The moment I start advertising, you can use my backyard for a wedding, setting fees, that's starting to be a business. That's not using your personal space to allow your friends to come over and utilize the space. So, I think we have to be real careful, because if someone went out and bought a piece of property and said, I'm going to be in business as an event center, we would have a long laundry list of do's and don'ts, things that they would have to require, sprinkler system, parking, fire codes, you know. We shouldn't allow someone just to backdoor a situation and be in business when we have people who are actually in business providing these services, and we're creating somewhat of an unfair advantage to the individual to go in and circumvent some of the rules that we've set up for this particular business. Not that I'm wholeheartedly against it, but I think we have to be careful how we do this because we don't want people using their personal residence and doubling as a full-time business. The moment you start advertising, hey, use my property, I think you're now taking your personal property, and we have to start evaluating you as a business. So, I'm for everybody using their own personal space, but I think we have to be careful and keep a mind, keep an open mind to respecting the property rights of the owners. And at some point, when is this being an all-out business versus just so happen? And at some point, when is this being an all-out business versus just so happen allowing someone to use your property once or twice a year? So I will have some pause in, you know, saying that someone can do 10 events a year, you know, is that the right number? Where did this number come from? You know, we, did we just pull it out of the air as a legitimate number of business? And if someone has 10 acres, we're requiring them to have 10 acres of property to do such events? Where do we come up with 175 people maximum attendance? You know, where are we getting some of the information that we're putting into this? Because I have 10 acres, certainly I can hold more than 175 people. You know, and if someone's going to have a wedding, that's an awful small wedding, just 175 people. You know, you got a lot of family and friends, but where do we, where are we getting 175? Where do we get the 10 acres? Where do we get the 10 events per year? Where, what's the logic or where's the statistics or? Because we never had this conversation as council, staff has never come to us to talk to us about, hey, if we allow personal residents to be used, here's what we think. So I would just have some pause about where do we get the information that we're putting into this ordinance that allows these events to happen on people's personal property?
Yeah, one of the points that you brought up was it being 10 acres. And the primary reason I would think of being 10 acres is as Mr. Oxendine and Mr. Dees said, that this is their primary farm residence. So this is more of agritourism as opposed to a business. Me as a business owner, I wouldn't want someone sitting in their backyard and competing against me. I agree with you wholeheartedly on the advertising portion. If you're going to advertise it as a business, then you need to report as a business. If this is something secondary, I can certainly understand it. The one thing that I don't want is us as a county to start acting more like a city. What disturbed me the most going through this recode, and I found that most of these codes are already here, is that we have so many rules and regulations telling people what they can and cannot do on their own property, it's sickening to me. I think the amount of government overreach within the codes, and I know I'm in the minority on this because I believe people should be able to do what they want to do wholeheartedly on their property. But we've got to look out for the rights of all citizens within the community. So you don't want to be, cause problems with your neighbors if we're not having problems with our neighbors. I don't think the event, the event issue is a major issue. And I think it is something that we can get corrected going through zoning. Ms. Councilman Cox has recommended to put it before zoning. I think it's something that we can work out, but we can give these people such as Mr. Dees who said they moved out to a farm and they're using this really as a faith-based organization, not necessarily as a business, instead of getting them shut down and having to comply and spend God knows how much on sprinkler systems and anything else that's out there.
I want to make a correction point, not to band it back and forth. I've never said people shouldn't be allowed to use their personal space. I'm saying that we need to be careful of what we do allow. And my main point, my main objective was when people start advertising, when people start advertising, now you're in the business sector of your private residence. I'm all for people being able to utilize their space, but at some point, we have to, as a county, have to make sure we're protecting adjoining property owners, making sure people are not backdooring. And no one's accusing anybody of just saying, I'm going to use this as my personal resident and then run a business. We have to balance it out and, you know, I made a big circle around 175 attendees. You know, where did that number come from? You know, if someone has 10 acres, or why wouldn't we allow someone to have five acres? Where's the, where's the line we're going to draw? Well, how do we get to 10 acres? You know, if, can I not have a piece of property that's AGC with five acres?
Well, I will say, and if there's any other discussion from any other council members?
Yeah, I just want to say one thing, in regards to, you know, as we look at small businesses and we look at people who are starting small businesses, I think, as Brandon mentioned, I think as a county, I think we need to look to make sure that we're clearly partnering and communicating well with the people of this, of our community. I think something like this is something we can talk through and work out the details to make it work for both parties, I really do. I think there's something here that we can work through to make it work. But I think in a broad scheme is that we've got many, our community, our York County is, you know, we've got country, we've got more densely populated areas, so not one shoe fits all. So we've got to be open-minded and creative in our discussions, in the communication. And I'm saying this from my perspective, from a county level, and when it comes to the community communication, I appreciate everybody's communication in regards to what they're needing and wanting, especially when you're looking at different things that you would think you'd have the rights to do from within your own property. So these are very good discussions, thank you.
Any other discussion?
Yeah, so I think the last thing that I want to be called is reactive. And, you know, when we talk about recode, recode's been going on now for 18 months. We've had public hearings, we've had public meetings, videos posted online. You know, several council members have put this on their Facebook pages. And so we've tried to let the public know what we're doing. There is a reason that we have three readings and a public hearing. And I was handed this tonight, five minutes before the meeting. So I haven't even had time to look at this. And, you know, I think these venues, I think they're important. I think that it's the fair way to do this is to allow all of the people who have a venue, either in operation legally or illegally, people who have the intent of having a venue operation. I feel like the fair thing to do is to, you know, we're hoping to allow ourselves tonight 90 days to work on things. I don't, I don't see a reason to push this through tonight. I think those 90 days are our opportunity to hear from those people that are in the same, in the same boat with some of the people that spoke tonight. This to me is slapdash and it is very subjective. The lot size, the number of people, the enforcement, the insurance. So we're not asking them to have any kind of fire suppression, but we want them to cover, have insurance. And I don't know how we monitor that, how we ensure, how we ensure that that's being done. I just, I feel like this is very reactive to some things that have happened in the last few weeks. And unfortunately, you know, when somebody tattletales on another business, the result is that those businesses, they maybe get shut down. And the good news is that we will have 90 days to try and fix these things. But there have been businesses in my district that have spent hundreds of thousands of dollars to become compliant. They are on this size acreage, and this has happened in the last year. There's one now that has this issue. And what I don't want to do is open the barn door and let a couple people out and then have to close this barn door back in some way for some people, even though it's a very few, over the next 90 days. So I'm not going to support this. This is a full ordinance that's been written without the zoning committing, without any, any conversation with anybody on this council. No recommendations made, and I am as opposed to the process of this as I am to just something subjective that I feel like is somewhat thrown together to fix what has come up in the last couple of weeks. So I'm going to be opposed to it tonight, but I will work very hard as the zoning committee chair to hold meetings, to hear from everybody who has an event venue and would like to weigh in on this over the next few weeks.
Any other discussion? Ms. Hamilton?
Trying to be open-minded and listen to everybody and listen to Mr. Dees and Mr. Oxendine and, you know, digest what the problem is and determine whether or not this is the best solution because it is something that, you know, we're, we're dealing with, you know, very swiftly. My concern isn't necessarily letting people have event venues, it's that we are creating two sets of standards. And where we seem to be drawing the line in order to help solve a problem with, you know, what we're calling mom and pop operations, that line seems to be not only arbitrary, but honestly, I wouldn't define a mom and pop small operation as 10 events with 175 people. I mean, that to me is a business, that's not a small operation. And what if you have five events but 50 people? You know, there's, there's standards here that seem beyond what the intent is that we're trying to accomplish. And I would rather have, I would rather, if we're going to lower the standards, I'd rather hear from everyone who has event venues or has, intends to bring event venues and have a set of standards that applies to everybody and not just how many days of the year you open your business. If you, if you go into a business and you open that business, you are in that business. And we shouldn't set our zoning standards based on how many days they're open out of the year. I don't know of another business that we do that for. It's just, are you in that business? Well, this is what applies. And, you know, to carve it out for one particular industry or one particular business does seem a bit arbitrary. I would love to hear, you know, how we can be more accommodating to event venues within the county and draft a, an amendment that takes into account the industry as a whole and how we can be more accommodating and less restrictive because it sounds like that's something we need to take up. But I don't see that this particular amendment resolves that problem. And like I said, I'm trying to be open-minded, but I don't see it, that it solves the problem that's, that I see exist both here in front of us tonight and on a greater level, which is much like what Councilman Guffey said, we're obviously being too restrictive if this is necessary as an exemption.
I think everyone's spoken. I do think that we've put some amendments up, given the way that we've structured recode, that we've all, I think each council member has put some amendments up that have been considered without running them through the zoning committee. And I certainly am not proposing that we do that in this case. I think we simply have an issue that we can correct now and that we could tweak in the next 90 days since we aren't doing pending ordinance. The code will go into place and those violations will remain. And I still think that there is a distinction between someone who operates as a commercial business and creates that business for the purpose of operating it 365 days a year and some of our other rural areas and their barns and being able to allow them an agritourism exemption. I can tell you that with, it was fast and furious to try and come up with some sort of solution. I hope that if this amendment were to fail, that council will continue to remain committed to finding a solution to this because it really is 3% of the use of that. There are a lot of folks in the agritourism industry who own farms and who do these sorts of things on the side. And I just don't think that we should treat them the same that we do as the ones who go in there and do want to have the grand, large-capacity commercial building. And I would say that in trying to, I want to say thank you to Michael Kendry, who's spent a good bit of time over the last couple of days trying to help craft a solution that would work. And the five, the 10 acres actually was double what Spartanburg allows and what Ori County does. So I think these, these were all an attempt to reduce that and to make it not the same as the larger-capacity ones and give us a chance to pass this now and tweak it as we do in the next few days. So that being said, all those in favor of the amendment, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Motion passes, amendment passes four to three. Do we have any other amendments?
Yes, I move to amend Reserve Section 155.265 of recode to provide recreational vehicle as a temporary dwelling during construction of a new municipal dwelling. Excuse me, new principal dwelling, there we go. In the particulars, as more particularly shown in the attachment here presented to council, but which allows a zoning compliance for an RV to be used as a temporary dwelling for not more than six months with one six-month extension on lots that are one acre or greater and for which the owner has a building permit for a single-family detached principal dwelling.
Motion on amendment, is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion?
Yeah, I can go, I'll go ahead and start off. I think that when you have a piece of property that's not in an HOA, again, as I mentioned earlier, you know, you get all parts of our, York County that have very rural areas where you've got many acres. And I think when somebody builds a home and they get a building permit, I think they'll allow them to bring their camper on there for six months while they're building it to make sure they're monitoring their equipment on site, make sure that everything's being safe. I think it's a, it's a fair opportunity for them to have this. We've seen it where people have built their homes, but because of COVID, there's been delays because of getting windows in and et cetera. So this, you know, it allows us to give them an opportunity to stay there, protect their home while they're building it, at the same time they're under a certain time restriction. If it goes beyond six months, then they would then have to reapply for another six. But I think it gives flexibility to the code and an opportunity for people that are not in HOAs.
Mr. Winkler?
I'll just say, you know, I support this because, you know, unfortunately in the society we live in, the world we live in right now, especially when you live out in a rural area where, you know, you don't have internet, so you can't have cameras up monitoring everything, watching everything, it's very easy for somebody to show up and still, all the generators still, I mean, we've had, you know, air conditioning units stolen, we've had houses that were stripped of all their wiring after they were fully wired and everything. I mean, so, you know, it's understandable that they need to be able to stay on the property and watch their investment and make sure it happens. And in today's society with supply chain issues, that's why we have added a six-month extension because, you know, sometimes you can't get something in in six months right now. So it takes a little more time.
Yeah, the biggest problem that I had, this, this, this ordinance is one of the things that bothered me the most, is that if you are building a home, there's no reason that if you've got a camper, you've got the building permit there. We're not talking about porches being built on, we're not talking about pools being added to it. We're talking about a temporary structure while you're in the process of building your home. If there was another place to go, such as a campground, which we know Ebenezer Park limits how long you can stay there, but also within this recode, whenever we list other campgrounds that are out, we limit people's stay to 14 days. And to me, that is just not fair. If you're in the process of building a home and you have an active permit, you know, I don't know if six months, one year is the proper amount of time, but so long as you are actually building the home. Now, I have no doubt that this was put into an ordinance prior to me being on council simply because of people taking advantage of the rules, people that just set their camper up. I've told everyone up here that my personal dream is to live in an airstream in the middle of 20 acres. But, you know, I won't be able to do that within York County. I'll have to move to another county in order to do so. But, yeah, I believe this is just a simple request. And I'm sure there will be instances that come up that make us question this, but I do believe that it is something that needs to be done. And that until we have the problem before us, I don't see why we are enforcing it.
Ms. Love? Again, we're fixing this for one person who happens to be living in a camper while his home is being built, and he needs 30 extra days. And we've already given him about 40 days. So again, we are being very reactive. I'm not opposed to fixing any ordinance that needs to be fixed. I'm not opposed to listening to, I'm very open-minded and I'm going to listen to these things as they come up. But I do not think that the way this has been done is, I think it's reactive. I don't think it is, you know, to hand out two pages on two different ordinances right before a meeting. Everything else is a small amendment, one little simple something. You're going to hear those, I guess, from several of us in a few minutes. But I am, I am very disheartened by how this has been presented tonight. And I think we are being most reactive without hearing from the public on this. We have eliminated the transparency and the public hearing on these two ordinances.
I remember something coming up similar to this several years ago. We had a family whose home burned down and they wanted to rebuild on the property. The property already had a well, septic tank. At the time, we didn't have anything that would address allowing a camper to be on that very site. I thought we would have done something then to allow, in an emergency situation, home burns down, family wants to rebuild, property has a functioning well, property has functioning septic tank or sewer situation. And several years ago, we didn't have anything to address it. And it seems like now, we still didn't even address it. But we did not allow that individual who begged and pleaded with us and, hey, why should you force me to go live in a hotel, rent a temporary home, spend extra money while I'm rebuilding on my current site? I wish we'd have done something several years ago when that came up. But now, fast forward probably five, six years later, we have a similar situation with a family, need more time on their own piece of property, who we're going after now fixing this problem seems like for them. You know, we're going through a recode, we're addressing a lot of things. It shouldn't be relegated based on what one individual's going through right now. We had the opportunity several years We had the opportunity several years ago to do something. And we don't see these type of issues come up that often. But when they do come up, we at least should have something on our books somewhere, some way, somehow that supports it or not support it. This is a tough one because if someone has a building permit, has an active RV with a license permit, I mean, with a tag on it. And I'm like, Allison, we're just getting this tonight, you know? So I haven't really had a chance to go through and say, yeah, I like this part, I don't like this part. One thing that did stand out to me is that you can do this on property size as small as one acre. You're not too far out in the sticks if you just have one acre. You know, you can find a one-acre lot relatively close, close to, close to town. You know, you don't have to be out without any wifi service just on a one-acre lot. So just looking through some of the things on the surface, you know, if we had the chance for the public to weigh in, committees to weigh in, people who've been in this situation who can come give testimony, say, hey, I was in this situation. I needed this outlet, this would have helped me save thousands of dollars over six, seven, eight, 10 months if I didn't have to go rent a short-term lease, if I didn't have to stay in a hotel for three months while my house was being built. You know, that lends its supporting hand to things that we're looking to do to better serve our community. I'm sure someone's had to do that. Someone had to take the long road to spend an additional thousands of dollars renting additional home space because they couldn't, they weren't allowed to use a camper. And this is definitely, you know, someone who's building a home, who has a camper, this is definitely not a cheap lifestyle. You know, you've got RVs and campers costing $100,000 these days. So we're not looking at, at this as just a penny-pitching opportunity. But I wish we would have had an opportunity to digest some of this in the zoning committee, had the public weigh in. But, you know, if we're just doing a RECODE and doing some amendments, this is basically an all-out rewrite. This is not just tweaking something, this is kind of a drop it in your lap at 5:55 and we're meeting at 6:00 PM, you know, wanting full support on what we're going to put in place going forward. And I know we can work on some things and tweak some things down the road, but we shouldn't have to be rushing to put something in place. You know, me personally, I'd rather just give the individual who's going through it right now another extension. But let's don't rewrite something and force it in just to accommodate an individual's situation right now. Let's be deliberate about it, let's take our time, let's get it right. But it's unfortunate, I don't think we can give that other individual another extension. So we're stuck between a rock and a hard place. We want to do everything we can to help individuals to be successful and make a transition as seamless as possible. But our hands are tied on certain things when we say we can't give another extension. But the right thing, or the wrong thing would be just the right ordinance just so it can happen right now. I think that's probably the danger of what we're doing here tonight is we're rushing. We didn't have the opportunity to kind of vet some things. I think I can probably add some things that make it better. I probably can take some things out to make it better. But I don't have that opportunity tonight, just getting it, you know, 50 minutes ago. So I won't, I won't be, I won't be supporting it. But I would like to say, I would like to go on record, I'm part of the zoning committee, these same two items that we just voted on in this one, I would love to have these in front of the zoning committee to work them out, to get them right, and so that we don't have a do-over over the next 90, 120 days. So I won't be supporting this, this amendment or this rewrite either.
I just, I want to add one thing to what I said. You know, it, it doesn't matter if 51% of the people, it doesn't matter if 95% of the people are for something that we are, we are talking about and we're discussing and we're going to be voting on. What does matter is that the people who are in favor of it, who, who are obviously going to be, you know, the people who spoke tonight, who were in favor of the event venues and the people who are in favor of, you know, being able to use their, their campers on their property. It doesn't even matter if we are in favor of it. What we have neglected to do with these two ordinances is to hear from the people who are the neighbors of these people or any other people who might not be in favor of it. That's, that is what a public hearing is for. And, and for us to sit up here and, and make assumptions, I mean, why don't we just do this all the time? Our meetings would be a lot shorter if we didn't have to have public, public hearings. So I'm, I'm very opposed to how this is done because you may all be sitting in this room tonight and be like, yes, people need to be able to live in their campers on their land. And, and yes, these event venues are all great. But you know what? There are a lot of people who we need to hear from and should hear from who might not agree with us. I'm not opposed to these two items, but I think it's only fair that we hear from the public. That's, that's part of our, that's part of our job as council. And, and, and we've, we've, we have failed those people who might not be in favor tonight.
Yeah, I want to say something else too. You're exactly right, we have failed. Our problem with us failing is that to ever assume that government should be proactive, we should always be reactive. Whenever something happens with citizens of the community, we are here to work for those citizens. Since we're bringing up the exact situation with this camper, we also need to make it clear that this camper is in the middle of eight acres of land that someone's already had property stolen off of. And there was not a citizen complaint based on this. This was inside of our own staff that filed the complaint. That is what I have a problem with. That's what I have a problem with, with all of these rules. We claim that we're complaint-based, but if our staff is the one making the complaints, then what's the point of it? We need to make sure that every rule within this RECODE is right. And as we walked into this meeting up until Wednesday of last week, we were all under the assumption that we were going to go through a pending ordinance doctrine. However, as of Wednesday, we're told that's not going to happen because now that's not the right way to do things and we need to go through third reading. Prior to coming in here, every one of these amendments that we are making will be reviewed through zoning from my understanding. So the only thing that we are asking with these amendments is for a little bit of flexibility as we go in. And then as we look at them through the zoning committee, we can make the recommendations that need to be made. We can hear from the people at that time to make those changes. So we're not asking to change all of the rules or change all of the ordinances. We're simply asking for a little bit of flexibility as we're making a big decision. I don't know if anyone out there has seen how big this book is. And yes, we've had plenty of time, but up until Wednesday, this was not going to be something that was going to be moving forward with third reading. We all had amendments that we wanted to make through the pending ordinance doctrine.
Any other discussions, Mr. Hamilton?
You know, that being said, the bottom line for me is I don't want to live or let alone serve on a council in a county where we're going to tell people you can't live in your own camper on your own property while you're building a house. That is the most restrictive thing I've ever heard of in my life. Especially in a situation where you're sitting on eight acres. I don't want to live in York County if that's what we're going to do to people. So I, I have no problem supporting this and I don't see how anyone would want to live in a county that tells people they can't do that.
All those in favor of the amendment, say aye. Any opposed?
No.
Motion, amendment passes six, five to two. Do we have any other amendments?
There you go. So a couple of things. The first thing is that I would like to pull the communications section out for now to have further investigation done around cell towers. I think that we're missing the mark on this. We, as we move forward, we need to have people have accessibility to cell signal. And when we're restricting only certain areas like we are with the additional requirements, I think we're not serving the people of York County well because we're not going to be able to give them good coverage. So I would recommend that we would at least pull that and push it into our 90-day review. But I also would like to recommend that we extend that 90-day review to actually through, six months in total, from three months to six months. Because I think that we've got a lot to review here. I think the impact of our changes, we need to make sure that we see the impact. Plus, we need to have time to look at things such as this and also to talk through, you know, low-impact builders and the effects of our requirements on low-impact builders in our area to make sure that we're getting it right. So I would request also that we push it from three months to six months to allow us the time to move forward with these things in a, in an appropriate manner.
I have a question about that.
We don't have a motion at this point. So do we have any other emotions or amendments? And we can circle back to that. Do we have any other amendments to the?
I move to amend the main motion with the following change. That Section 155.656B with Subpart 4.5, backyard chicken keep, keeping, be revised to state roosters prohibited, except within the Lake Wylie overlay. It shall be unlawful to keep a rooster defined as a male chicken of at least one year of age.
Motion and a second, any discussion?
Can I get an amen?
Any other discussion? All those in favor of the amendment, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, amendment passes.
Yep. Move that the main motion be amended with the following change. Section 155.201, residential development standards, single-family detached be revised to add a sub-paragraph six under A applicability that states new homes intended for occupation by persons aged 55 and older, as stated in subdivisions, covenants, conditions, and restrictions, CCRs, constructed on lots that received preliminary plat approval prior to January 1st, 2021 are exempt from the provisions of this section.
I'll second.
Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion?
I'd just like some clarification on that as far as it's emptying them for people who had a application in before a certain date. Is that not working around what we were telling all the other builders? If they don't have something in with a preliminary plat that's been approved yet, that they fall under the new code and we're working, work around here for somebody to fall under the old code?
My understanding, it wouldn't apply to a preliminary plat. It applies to building permits. So there wouldn't be any vesting of like a preliminary plat. So I think that's what you're asking. It would apply to the property when the building permit is applied for.
So let me explain, I'll explain what this is, just so everybody's clear. When we put some of the Lake Wylie overlay standards in place, we put some things in that make 55 and up communities unbuildable. They can't get, they can't get approval. So in a district like ours where the schools are full, we really do want some 55 and older communities to be able to build there. So one example is in our, I guess, our elevation standards, you have to have a couple of steps up. And in the, the building of 55 and up communities, they don't have any steps up. You just go straight in. So that's, that's one of the, that's one of several kind of hurdles to them being able to build. So we, we want to make this happen and then we will come back within that either, you know, 90-day or however many ti, however long we extend that out and come back with some standards that, that are better defined for the age 55 and up communities. But right now, we have them where they, they cannot, they can't build.
Mr. Roddy?
So the preliminary plat was approved by what date?
January 1st, 2021.
No.
They wouldn't have to go by the new standards that we're putting in today?
Right.
Okay.
For clarification, Mr. Roddy said preliminary plat.
You said, did you say preliminary plat?
Jonathan, can you clarify that?
If I could, and I'll get Jonathan to help me if I need to. The, the issue is whether the home that is constructed or to be constructed would be subject to the design standards in the Lake Wylie overlay. What I understand the motion is if they've already got a preliminary plat approved and now they want to do senior housing, for senior housing for those, for that plat, the design standards would not apply. The, there's no outright prohibition against senior housing. It's just some of the design standards that we have created in the Lake Wylie district are not conducive to building senior housing. Just as Allison, Ms. Love stated, an elevated slab or a crawl space is not conducive to senior housing. So this would allow those plats that are already approved for those homes to get a permit on slab on grade so they can move right in. Some other things with the garages, the configuration of the lots, the size of the lots are not conducive to senior housing. So I think the question is, it's, it's resolved when you pull the building permit. She's making it applicable to only things that are already approved. If, if that, I may have confused you more than.
Well, part of the, I'll just say here, you know, we're, we're here and all, everybody's sitting here sharing us talk about things we saw 20 minutes ago where we didn't see. We haven't seen any of these amendments at all. And so, you know, we're going to hear some more that we haven't seen at all. So I'm just trying to make sure I understand them since I haven't seen them or read anything about them. They haven't even been put in front of us to look at. We're just doing them off a motion that nobody's seen. And we've all had several weeks to have been looking at and doing motions and figuring all this out before third reading tonight. So, you know, now we're on third reading, we're making them. I just want to make sure I understand them and that's why I keep asking them because we're, you know, I, I want to make sure we're not just allowing an exception in a certain area when we've had a lot of builders and other people come to us about preliminary plats with these changes. I want to make sure we're being consistent with everybody is what I want to make sure of.
Yeah, and just to be clear, the, these design standards don't exist in other parts of the county. So it is specific to Lake Wylie.
Any other discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, amendment passes.
I move that the main motion be amended with the following changes. One, Section 155.579, general sign standards, Paragraph D, Subparagraph 3A, regarding electronic reader boards be revised to state, signs may feature electronic reader boards as indicated in the sign standards for each district. Signs in residential developments or the Lake Wylie overlay sign district may not include electronic reader boards. Two, Table 155.580-4, freestanding canopy sign standards be revised to include a note that electronic reader boards are not allowed in the Lake Wylie overlay sign district. Three, Table 155.580-5, ground signs by district. And Table 155.581-1, incidental signs by district be revised to change the reader, the electronic reader board row to a no in the Lake Wylie sign district column.
We have a motion, is there a second? Motion and second, any discussion?
I just, clarification, you said it, but I just want to clarify for everybody in the audience. These all affect Lake Wylie's.
It's only for Lake Wylie, yes. And it's a, it is actually something that was kind of, has been watered down over time. It was kind of originally in the, in the Lake Wylie overlay. It's been watered down, not enforced, and we're just trying to get that back on the radar of businesses and the zoning board of appeals who would approve any, any sign exceptions.
Point of order, there may be some updated sections to that motion, but the titles remain the same. So subject, you can make that subject to the revised code sections from our RECODE consultant, that would be fine.
Mr. Kendry, with these amendments, are these ordinances going to be drafted per the motion and they won't come back before us?
That's correct. These are going to be standalone changes to the current draft.
Right.
Will, will there be any amendments required though to request the, or make the change to 60 days? Excuse me, six months as opposed to three months? Is there a requirement from that perspective?
No, there's no requirement. There's an understanding that there, because of the volume of changes that are ongoing in this particular RECODE project, that there may be some sections that require greater attention in the next three to six months. And the understanding from the workshops, I was that we were going to make a concerted effort to address those outstanding matters or items that need additional attention, to get those back before council as quickly as we can, once we determine what those changes need to be. So the posture of the ordinance, of the RECODE tonight is to adopt the text as it appears for third reading and then to focus on those areas the council members want addressed within the next number of months so that we can clean up our perceived areas of concern and address them, cure them, and go forward.
So six months, we, as far as the timeframe is, is just again, open for required, required time need?
That's correct.
Okay. Okay, all right, very good.
I just wanted to make sure that the amendments, and I still think we have a considerable amount of them, that you will take direction from them and let us know because they don't come back before us. That was the distinction in the others was that it was spelled out beforehand.
That's correct.
Others will be, will be done, but they won't come back before us. Correct?
The ones tonight will be finalized and not come back again.
And the ones that are just made by motion, you'll correct them with an ordinance that reflects the motion that's made.
That's correct, they'll be corrected after tonight.
Right.
So I have, can I ask a question, Michael?
Yes.
So we're, you know, Councilman Aldis asking for additional time. Are we, do we have to wait until the end of that time to bring things back? Or are we able to bring?
Or are we able to bring things back at council meetings during that time?
During that time is the understanding.
All those in favor of the amendments, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, amendment passes. Any other amendments?
All right. Move to amend that section 155 dot two oh four setback, subpart three point nine, communication towers, to change the language of be setback distance to communication towers must be set back a distance equal to lesser of seventy-five percent of their overall height or the fall zone for the communication tower as certified by a South Carolina professional engineer from the lot line for any lot in the zoning district. However, guide wire anchors need comply with provisions of subsection A above. And if I could clarify, the reason that I want to amend this, we've had a couple gentlemen come by here the past couple meetings. And this seems to be the biggest hurdle that they have that is not part of our current code. I would rather us not enforce something that's harsher until it goes before our zoning committee. So I would like for us to keep it a little bit more lax until we get it before zoning and then we can judge from that point.
So we have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second, any other discussion?
I'd like to ask to offer a, a friendly amendment to your amendment if I could, that we give more time to get it built. Again, we're in a supply chain issue right now and I think they have ninety days to do it from the time they're approved. Unless that's a second motion you're putting in, I think we need to.
Something that I didn't, it's something that I actually spoke with Mr. Bueno today about. And from our understanding, that has not been an issue at all in the past, right?
What, to get it up?
If it were, huh?
To get the tower up?
With it, with that ninety day period.
Right.
It actually seemed a little bit more lax now. Now, I know in the previous they could file for an extension. Can they still file for an extension on this one? So it should not be an issue. However, we do have this six months. So if it becomes an issue, that way we can address it from there.
Okay. Then I'll withdraw.
You know, as I mentioned earlier, setback issue, this to me is, is a big issue. And I, in regards to this, this, by addressing this, I think we're supporting the people of our, of our county because we want to allow cell towers to go to where they need to go in a required area. So coverage would be much better for that.
Yeah, Mr. Roddy.
I'm sure we all remember the cell tower vote that we took several years, about three, four years ago now, maybe, when I was saying we need more cell towers in York County. We need more cell towers in York County because it never fails when I'm on the phone talking to staff or anybody or some of my colleagues up here, we're dropping calls. And the first thing I say when I call back is we need more cell towers. I've been saying it for years. So I'm glad to see that we have something active right now that will make it a little less stringent on cell towers being able to come because EMS uses them, police fire medic uses them. Lord knows, we all use them. You can't find a twelve-year-old or a ten-year-old without a cellphone or grandma or granddad who's seventy, eighty, or ninety without a cellphone. So we need to make sure that we keep all lines of communication open. And if that means someone being a little discomfort with a cell tower being located remotely close to their house. And, and I said this when we were going through this a couple of years ago is if you don't want a cell tower anywhere near your house, turn your cellphone in because it's near somebody's house and somebody's having to put up with it. And it's just the way of the world right now. And we are constantly trying to adapt and make changes. And it makes everybody's life a lot more comfortable. It may be a little rub to have one close near your property. But I put cell towers in the same category as prisons, landfills, or shade tree mechanic garages. Nobody wants them near their house, but we all use them. So I think it's one of those things that is, I hate to use the term unnecessary evil, but I'm glad to see that we have, we're addressing this in, in the recode and doing some things that make it a look more accessible for tel- cell towers to come into, to York County because we greatly need the communications. So I will be supporting this one.
Any other discussion?
One out of three.
No other discussion? All those in favor of the amendment say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, amendment passes.
Uh, move to amend that table 155 dot two seventy-one dash two use table in the zoning code be amended to include landscape supply facilities as permitted use in the general commercial district.
Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion?
Yeah, I'd like to clarify since I do own a landscape supply company. The only reason that I requested to put that into general commercial is because building supply along with, what's it, farm and garden or garden supply are allowed within G C. And for some reason, landscape supply was not allowed. And I don't really see too much of a difference between the two.
Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, amendment passes.
All right. Move to amend that section 154 dot one nine nine, tree conservation subsection A three, non-residential tree save requirements, including figure 154 dot one nine nine dash three, non-residential tree planting requirement, and section 154 dot two oh four, York County Tree Fund established be removed in their entirety and that sections be renumbered appropriately to accommodate the deletions.
Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion?
I'll clarify, the reason that I'm pulling this, it's not that I necessarily disagree with it, but this is a new rule, something that is not currently as part of our code. And I would like it to go before zoning for us to ensure and to vet before we add on these additional requirements.
Any other discussion? All those in favor of the amendment, amendments, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, amendment passes.
All right. Move to amend zoning code part three, conditional and special exemption uses, subpart three thirty-six, tattoo and body piercing establishments, be amended to modify the minimum separation distance in section 155 dot five nine six B from five hundred feet to two hundred feet.
Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion?
I would like to say the reason that I am doing this, tattoo parlors have not been allowed within York County. This is something that is new. The one thing that I did not like, not that it is open freefall for anyone to move in with a tattoo parlor, but five hundred feet is one and a half football fields distance from your nearest property. Whenever you look at the zoning, it's essentially every other district that's listed on there. So it's still not as lax as I would like it. So I'm just asking to put it before zoning and just loosen this one thing before we pass it.
Mr. Roddy.
I'm going to support this. I spoke to several individuals who've been trying to open up an establishment, whether it was in Rock Hill, Fort Mill, just in York County in general. This is a heavily regulated industry. It is allowed in South Carolina, but we have not, we've kind of outlawed it by some of the requirements that were needed, obviously, and I live in Rock Hill. So several people have attempted to open establishment in Rock Hill. And some of the requirements are so strict, you're basically outlawing it with your restrictions. And, you know, with nowadays, with a lot of ex-military, a lot of teenagers who are above age, they're going to North Carolina, they're going to Gastonia, they're going to Charlotte, North Carolina. But we have an opportunity to, to allow a regulated business that will be paying taxes here in York County. I don't personally have a tattoo, probably won't ever get one. But I do respect the fact that those who want to get a tattoo, those tattoo artists that live in Rock Hill, having to go to North Carolina to perform their services. And one thing, I made a note while we were, before the meeting, I said it, if you want to see what a city or county thinks of a business, look at the requirements, regulations, and setbacks it takes to open. Sometimes we allow things to happen, but we regulate them out of business. And I think anytime you're saying we'll allow a business to move in or come into York County and we require the setbacks, so far, it's going to be hard to find locations for these businesses to locate. And what would it take for property owners who have property that's vacant, that's available, that's within a normal setback, but you can't locate a tattoo establishment there? So we're saying that a liquor store can be here, a retail shop can be here, but a tattoo establishment has to be way back here. I think we're creating such an unfair disadvantage to anyone looking to open that business. So I'm, I'm all for making sure that we be within reason because where these establishments can locate, people are not going to go out and build buildings five hundred feet off the road just so they can open a tattoo establishment. They're going to look for an existing structure. Landlords who have existing structures within a normal setback probably going to wonder, you know, why can't someone locate in my facility? Then, then the tattoo artist say, well, I have to be five hundred feet. You know, that basically takes all or a lot of existing structures out of play. That makes it that much harder for people to open a business. I would much rather a tattoo establishment locate closer to the road than a liquor store, a CBD shop. You know, some of the things that we have right up in our face, but we want to set a tattoo establishment so far off the road. I think that creates such an unfair advantage to anybody looking to engage in that business. I don't have a tattoo. I don't even know if anybody up here has a tattoo. But we want to make sure we're being, somebody may have. Has to be the youngest one up here, right? But all I'm saying is if we're going to welcome this business in New York County, let's be fair to it. Let's give it every opportunity to succeed. Let's don't penalize it before they get open. I wish we had a say on other things locating within a reasonable setback, but it wasn't, it wasn't our call. But certainly, we have an opportunity to tweak some of this language. I'm part of the zoning committee as well as Allison and Brandon. We will be taking a look to see what we can do to make sure that anybody looking to locate this business in York County, first, it's going to be a taxpaying entity, something that a lot of people are driving across the line for. A lot of tattoo artists live in York County, having to perform their services in North Carolina. I, I just think we have to continue to evolve our county if we want to continue to, to grow in service, not just certain age populations, certain demographics. We want to make sure that we offer services for those who want a tattoo, who those, those who want to live in a nice community, those who want to enjoy their lifestyle, whatever it may be. So I'll, I'll be supporting this and look forward to working through the zoning committee to make sure that we're, we're being equally fair to tattoo establishments looking to locate in York County.
Mr. Weckler.
I've said, don't have any tattoos, don't have anything against anybody who does. All three of my children do, plenty of people. But not, just not something I've been interested in. But I'm not sure if it's a chicken or an egg thing, but every tattoo establishment that I've ever driven by is not in a neighborhood that I'd really like to have my house in or my business in when I've seen them. So I'm not against zoning committee looking at them and making sure the rules are right, but I won't support it tonight in doing something to make it easier for them to come because we have not looked at it through zoning committee. And I've got issues, concerns about what we may allow and what it may do to certain neighborhoods where it is allowed. I'd rather go through zoning first. So I may support it in the future because I'm not dead set against them. I'm just not going to support it tonight without knowing more of, you know, what, what the other effects are and what the other regulations may or may not be and that type of thing. So I won't support this one tonight.
Any other discussion?
I am going to support it tonight. But one of my concerns is that Lake Wally is probably sure to get one. So I will support this, we'll talk about it in the zoning committee. And in the meantime, I will hear from the people in the Lake Wally overlay to determine if we need to come back and maybe approve it countywide, but have maybe a restriction in the Lake Wally overlay.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? I, I will not support the, the amendment to that one tonight simply because I, I agree with staff's recommendation. We clearly, there needed to be something there to allow them to happen. I support what they've done in terms of suggesting a solution instead of us going from one extreme to another. I think it'd be better if we started there and then worked our way into it instead of creating an open end that that may cause some concerns with the neighbors. So it sounds like there still may be support despite that. But all those in favor of the amendment, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no.
No.
Motion passes five to two. Any other amendments? You done?
I'm done.
Anyone else have any amendments? Do, do we have any discussion on the main motion?
Well, yeah, I'll speak since I've been speaking a lot on this tonight. I, I've been, I would say my stress levels have been highest since Wednesday with this recode. And partial, I mean, honestly, a lot of it falls on me. I was focusing on redistricting, I wasn't following the recode as thoroughly. Staff has given us opportunity, but I was operating under the assumption that we were going to be moving forward in a different way instead of it coming to third reading. So that's the reason I've made so many motions. The one thing I don't want to do and I fear most often, and I will read this real quick because this is something that I keep up on my phone, if my phone will scroll right. I, I keep this saying on my phone for a reason. It says liberals and radicals, which I don't view as left and right. I view it as the far left or the far right. The conservative says are imprudent for they dash at their objectives without giving much heed to the risk of new abuses worse than the evils they hope to sweep away. And whenever we start talking about changing ordinance, that's what I'm most worried about. I'm worried about us creating an ordinance that's going to make it hard for these individuals, like the person whose house burned down. That is something that we've got to get work on. Jonathan mentioned that to me today whenever we were talking about the cameras. Just did not have time to put that in there. But we do need to have that in there as a temporary structure. So I know we've got a lot of work ahead of us with zoning. And I really appreciate everyone on council kind of supporting, getting this through. Thank you to staff. I know they have busted their tail trying to get this recode done as well. That's something that the county needed. There's a lot of good things in here. I'm just worried about whenever I don't understand every single line of it.
Any other?
Yeah, so again, I want to get, thank you staff and, you know, everybody's hard work through this process in the committee. You all, you know, it's, it's, there's a lot, lot to that. But the job doesn't stop here, right? This continues. That's why I think it's critical that we have this, again, we've opened it up to six months. Allow us to understand the impact because sometimes we don't know what we don't know until some of these things are implemented. And, and when these things are implemented, we need to be able to react quickly to them, to make the changes quickly. You know, as I mentioned earlier, we've got some needs that we need to work with our low-impact builders on. You know, those are things that we need to work with them across the board. Again, reacting quickly, giving us a six months to look at it. I think this is critical. Again, appreciate everybody's feedback tonight, too. Thank you, thank you.
Mr. Roddy.
I just want to say each and every time staff has a huge undertaking, they have always come through force, they put a lot of time, effort, and energy into writing things such as this recode. I remember when I first got on council and the, the name of this document is slipping my mind. I must be getting a little older, but maybe Michael Kendry can remember. But staff worked on this huge thing. And as soon as I got on council, within the first month, staff had worked on this thing for about two years. And we went back and forth, back and forth with it. Ultimately, we ended up, council ended up not approving it. But just to show you how staff pours their heart into it, they take a lot of criticism because they come up with things that may rub certain industry leaders a certain way. But they're doing it to make it better for us as a county, as a community. So my hat goes off each and every time staff undertakes these huge projects such as a recode. And as soon as I get through talking, I'm going to remember what that, that, that document was. It was, it was the U D O. Now, how did you remember that?
Because it didn't get, it didn't get passed.
It was a U D O.
It's what's wrong with Lake Wally today.
So it's, it's, it's some things that, that would have probably gotten us to where we are a lot faster. But luckily, our staff has continued to evolve and work on things year in and year out. We don't always get it right. You know, we'll be sitting here this time next year talking about a problem we didn't know this year. But I think the good thing about it is we're not reluctant to bring those issues forward, bring them to the community, let the community weigh in on them. Because at the end of the day, we're here to listen to you, whether you live in Rock Hill, Fort Mill, anywhere in York County because you want what you want in your community. You're the ones who make the huge investments, whether it's business investment, residential investment. So at the end of the day, we work for you guys and we want to make sure we're offering things to the community that people can live with in their community, things that people want to see in their community. And if there's something that we're. something that we're overlooking or we don't get right, that podium's open every other Monday night to bring your concerns and blessings or gratitude or what have you back to this chamber every other Monday night, and it's our job to maneuver and make things work as best in Clover, Fort Meo, Lake Wylie, Rock Hill, that's our job, and I think staff makes it a lot easier for us to do it, we just show up on Monday nights and, and hopefully we've, everybody's read the documents and, and information, but staff is the ones that really puts the blood, sweat and tears into making these type documents and these type changes because we're just the faces that sit up here, but staff is the ones that does it day in and day out, forty, fifty hours a week, and we can't thank them enough for supplying us with what we need, thank you.
Mr. Hampton.
You know, I just want to say, we, one thing that everyone up here on this council agrees on is that we all want York County to be an amazing place to live, we might disagree on what exactly that means, but this recode is a massive undertaking, but at the end of the day, that's the goal, is to make York County an even better place to live, and, you know, I hope that we are all ears, as, as Councilman Roddy said, and, and listening to people as we push this out, because inevitably there will be issues that are going to arise, and even though everyone up here has done their best, something's going to come up. If anyone, you know, I have friends in the software industry, when they push out new code, there's bugs that come up and people get in there and break it and fix it, and next thing you know, they have to react swiftly to, to make sure that those bugs are, are replaced. The same thing is true here, we need to make sure that anyone that is affected by this adversely, we know and we can look at and say, hey, was this the right decision or not? And then, you know, react swiftly and then move forward. But I do want to thank staff for their massive undertaking, Brandon I know has his book, if you want to hold that thing up again. When we talk about recode, I mean, that's it, I mean, you know, that thing is, is the result of a whole lot of work and labor, you know, we have been working on it for months, at the same time, we're doing redistricting, so everyone here, if you don't have some nervousness and you're not a little bit stressed out about something, about passing something like this, then I don't, something's wrong with you, you're just not human, because this, this affects everyone, it affects y'all. So I appreciate everyone's interest in coming and listening to, you know, what we're going through and going through the, the process of the three readings, and we're all ears, this is what we're here for, if for some reason, you know, there's something that needs to be corrected or changed or fixed, please let us know and we'll do our best, so thank you.
I'd just like to echo the thanking staff as well, they put a lot of work and effort into this.
Any other comments?
Yeah, I just, Jonathan, stand up for just a second.
I thought he will stand.
This guy, y'all, this is who everybody's thanking, him and his team of planning and zoning, he's the, he's the planning director, so thank you for the time and the effort and for putting them, putting up with all of us, because what you see going on between us up here, it goes on between us and them and county management, and it's, it's a constant thing, but I think the end, the end game is to make York County better, one little ordinance and amendment at a time, thank you to Michael Kendry and, and Laura over there, our county attorneys who keep us all legal and, and keep us within our, within our lanes as a county, so, so it is very important, this, this recode is something, it encompassed a lot of things that, that I've wanted to see happen since I got on council five years ago, so it's, it's been a big undertaking, and, and the next thing that you need to know as the citizens who are at the top of our organizational chart in York County, is that this coming Friday and Saturday, we will spend those two days working on our strategic plan for the, for the next year, and that's another big two days, and so I think we'll all recover from tonight and be ready for, be ready for that this weekend, so anyway, it's just, this is a tough job, and quite frankly, I love it, and, and I think we've, we've, we work well together and we've come a long, a long way with a lot of good backup out of management and, and this planning department.
Anyone else?
I'll just echo, thank you Jonathan, thank you David, Hudson, and Michael Kendry, all of you for your hard work, a code that has not been updated in twenty years is, is a code that needs a lot of fixing, and we've had a lot of comments up here today about how to propose amendments, and I think those things were done primarily to accommodate a lot of requests that we get third reading done, because there are a lot of good things in here that need to go ahead and go into effect, especially dealing with moratoriums, and so we didn't have the time to spend as much time or that we even thought we would have fixing some of the, the outstanding criteria, the way that you change these things is through amendments from the floor, it's much more transparent to have the ordinance out there so you can take a look at it, but these things are going to get changed, and we're obviously going to take the time, one of the things that I know that, that Mr. Kendry has told us is that if there are things that need immediately, immediately to be addressed, that that can be done more quickly, and it's our goal to make sure that we identify what the glitches are with the code as we pass it, as we move forward, and our commitment to you as a council, which I think is unanimous, is that we, that we will do everything we can to make sure that we fix the places that maybe unintentionally got through, but this is an extremely important thing for us to do, it makes it easier, and even developers that have come out have said it makes it easier for them to read and, and to follow, and it also gives some additional uses to our private property owners that they didn't have before that they needed to have. All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion passes. Counsel to consider a third reading of an ordinance to amend York County Code of Ordinances, Chapter thirty-one, County Policies, Section thirty-one point oh one, rates, fees and charges for zoning appeals, applications for variances, rezoning requests, permits, inspections, plan reviews and other applications, procedures and services rendered by the York County Planning and Development Department and the York County Engineering Department to retitle the section Land Development Fee Schedule to create fees for new procedures pursuant to revisions to the zoning code and land development code, to revise and reorder the fee table and table notes to provide for a public hearing and to provide for other matters relating thereto.
Move to approve.
Second. Motion and a second, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion passes. We move now to do new business, counsel to approve a request from the York County Library to allow the painting of a mural on the Rock Hill Library Building owned by York County.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion passes. Counsel to consider approval of a purchase and sale agreement in the amount of one point two million plus brokerage fee of two point five percent between Natu Bye, G Patel and York County for a property located at two thirty-six North Park Drive, Rock Hill, South Carolina, two nine seven three oh.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion?
I need to make one clarification, the two point five percent that's mentioned there as the brokerage fee does not apply to this, so it's included in the sale price.
Do we, Mr. Kendry, Laura, do we need to make any changes since we, we read it? Do we need to make the clarification, is that fine? Who made the motion? Do you, do you approve the clarification to remove that?
Yes.
And the second?
Second.
Okay. All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion passes. Go back to consent. Counsel to adopt a resolution consenting to and ratifying the assignment and assumption of a fee in lieu of tax incentive agreement from Paragon seven eighty-two LLC to L E L Paragon Way Associates LLC and other matters, and other related matters.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion?
I pulled that out because it was a ratification and it just, I think it, we had to vote separately, is that, is that the purpose of that?
Yeah, ratifications need to be done and not on consent, and there was oversight to put those in consent.
Just for purposes of, of folks listening, this is not a new fee-in lieu agreement, it's simply assigning it to a new purchaser. All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion passes. Counsel to adopt a resolution consenting to and ratifying the assignment and assumption of a fee in lieu of tax incentive agreement from L E L Paragon Way Associates LLC to Endus Realty Trust Inc. and other matters, and other related matters.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion passes. Committee and other reports, Chairman Robert Winkler, Finance and Operations.
Thank you, Finance and Operations met this evening at five thirty, President with myself and Councilman Allison Love, we took up applications for service for the Rock Hill York County Convention Visitors Bureau, and we recommended the appointment of Elizabeth Bowers to fill an unexpired term, on the Zoning Board of Appeals, we recommended the appointment of Thomas Bud Smith for a first term in District Six, Catawba Regional Council of Governments, we recommended Dean Field for a first term in the at-large seat, and we discussed a request that I had before Finance and Operations for some of our district, I'm drawing a blank here on what, what we're calling it now, Kevin.
The Council Discretionary Fund.
The Council Discretionary Fund for a matching grant for tender hearts for their men's shelter for transportation, and then we got a finance update, and we're on track, we'll know more about collections and stuff with our next update, because then that'll be into when the tax bills, most of that money comes in from all of our tax bills, so we'll know how that collection's going, but everything looks good, other than the fact that vacancies are still much higher than we'd like at county level and sheriff's office.
Thank you, Mr. Winkler. I will say that the Catawba End Committee, Allison Love and Tom Aldette and I met Tuesday and received some updates from staff on the grants and applications for the park, as well as the activities there and cooperating with the Catawbas to harvest some of the river cane and the efforts moving forward, we, we also had the grant for the trails that was put into effect, and I think moving forward to start getting updates on the phase one completion. Now we move to citizen concerns, we have a presentation, Citizens for Preservation of York County to address council regarding development in York County and its impact on citizens. As you approach, if you could just state your name and give your address, and we typically request that comments stay between five or ten minutes.
You skipped.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Skip councilman.
I'm sorry. Okay, yeah, I'll do that. Please come forward, we'll do the council member since you've been sitting patiently.
My name is Mike Royer, ninety, Pitts Road in Catawba, South Carolina. When I saw that we were last on the agenda, I had a little bit of concern because I'm hoping this is not turning into bedtime story for you all as late as it's getting, but these are some very important things to the folks in our community, real quick, I'm just going to ask the folks that came along with me to stand up real quick. We, we have had some concerns about things going on in our neck of the woods of York County, thank y'all, and we have some things that we wanted to bring to your attention if you may not have been following, especially with what we've heard today of all the work you folks have been doing with recoding and rezoning and redistricting, we've had development activity in a south side TIF that's occurring with Rock Hill that I think you all are aware of that's taking place, we're having forced annexation through utility contracts in our area, there's a design overlay district, a future land use plan, future growth plan, development that's happening on nine oh one, and some safety issues around all these things, This recent TIF that was done by the city of Rock Hill is the largest in the city's history, two hundred and twenty-five million dollars compared to the next largest one being only eighty-five million, they are planning to use funds from Rock Hill School District to be able to afford to do this, and that's very concerning to many of us. Most of the landowners involved in this acquisition or annexation were forced to agree into annexation, and I'm going to go into a little bit more detail in a minute about how that happened. A lot of the county residents near these properties are very concerned that they're going to be forced into the city as well. Forced annexation through utilities in two thousand and thirteen, you know, York County entered into agreements with different municipalities to establish exclusive water rights, little circle down there in the corner, that's where we're located, and as you can see, we are exclusively served by the city of Rock Hill Water and Sewer Department, so we have water and sewer service being versus being on a well or septic, we have to get that from the city of Rock Hill. When someone outside the city limits becomes a customer, they must sign away their property rights and comply with the city's design overlay district requirements. These are some excerpts from the actual utility contract that has to, or I'm sorry, the annexation agreement and utility contract that has to be signed, so the, the area will be developed to the current city standards to ensure compatibility at the time of future annexation, which is their way of saying you'll comply with your design overlay district. Will sign any and every annexation petition. That failure to satisfy the obligation could result in the termination of that service, that it imposes a restrictive covenant on that land for not just that landowner, but any subsequent landowners, and then if, whoops, let's back up a little bit, got a little jumpy there. It also revically appoints the city manager or their designee as attorneys in fact for that property owner, that if that property owner doesn't comply with their request for annexation or asking them to sign the documents, that the city manager can sign on their behalf. The terms of this utility agreement really equate to forced annexation contrary to the volume, voluntary requirements that are in South Carolina Code, Section five dash three dash one fifty. In addition to that, there's another South Carolina Code where connection to an existing viable water system is feasible that you must connect, so this means once the utility's available, landowners may not receive permits from DHEC for installation or repair to wells or septic, because they have to comply with this part of South Carolina Code, again, leading to forced annexation. None of the landowners are able to vote for these representatives who are putting these things in place from the city of Rock Hill, really equates to taxation without representation, which is one of the primary concepts that led to the founding of our country. We're deeply concerned about, we believe this to be as an immoral unfair practice being used by the city to force county residents into annexation. The design overlay district that they have, it's a sixty-six page specification document that really is the equivalent of Rock Hill imposing HOA-type restrictions and appearance standards on county residents. When you sign your utility agreement, you are agreeing to follow those design overlay district. This is the design overlay district, if you take a very close look at that, the blue line is the current city limit, so they are imposing these regulations on county residents who are not in the city, and I think this also gives you a window into where they are planning to go as far as annexation is concerned. They have a future use plan, they have our area, again, you can see the city limits, all that area down to the rice outside, so what are their plans for our area, we're on their future use plan, what does edge management mean in that section there that is quite a ways out of the city, but they, they have some plan for that, we've been able to get in, unable to get answers for that. Section four and five in their future growth plan, again, no details on what's happening, but they've clearly designated parts of the county as part of their future growth plan. Nine oh one development, on January twenty-fourth, the Rock Hill City Council approved a one and a half mile extension of water and sewer lines down nine oh one for the New York Preparatory The extension of water sewer lines for that YPA establishes a service that's needed for a much bigger, high-density development that is planned along that one and a half mile This area in purple was part of that TIF that was just annexed back at the end of two thousand and one, if you will notice on this, we've got several places where you have properties that barely join together that kind of create this city limit, so everything in purple's in the city limits, everything in white's in the county. Much of this property is going to have high-density housing on it. This is the high-density plan of such for the nine oh one area. So all of these for us create safety issues of, we've not seen any plans from the city of how police or fire services are going to be expanded to cover this surge in population in this area, we're not aware of any inter-agency agreements between Sheriff's Department, Police Department, Fire, Volunteer to ensure residents of those areas receive coordinated responses, because right today, there are city resources that are in close proximity to those county areas that don't respond to an emergency right next door because it's not within the city limits. We've seen no plans for how the current road and traffic infrastructure in We've seen no plans for how the current road and traffic infrastructure in these areas will be modified to safely accommodate this increased population density. Well, there we go. So Rock Hill is expanding its boundaries into our area, utilizing its monopoly water and sewer services to force residents into annexation. We are concerned about the public education dollars going towards development projects. We're concerned that multiple high-density neighborhoods are coming into our area when they would not be permitted at that density level under current county regulations. We're concerned about the fast pace that this is happening without consideration for how emergency services may need to be modified or improved, or roads modified or changed to handle that density. So we really need your help. We're asking for your assistance to help address these concerns and help preserve York County. How can we protect our land rights and prevent forced annexation? How can we ensure development in our areas not controlled by individuals who we're not allowed to vote for? How do we ensure county landowners can obtain well and septic systems as needed if they choose not to connect to utilities? How do we ensure these residents in these disjointed areas can get emergency services without confusion of who's supposed to respond? And our group, the Citizens for the Preservation of York County, is willing to attend discussions, meetings, and work through these issues with anyone who will listen and work with us to try and do this for the benefit of all York County residents. We ask that you provide a response to our concerns before your March twenty-first council meeting. The other thing is, I hope you all have received an email from us. We're having a community meeting on March third. And if you think you can get into some of this and understand a little bit better, we would really appreciate you attending that meeting on March third, so that we can help get some answers to the community about what is happening with this. We're not against development. We know development is going to come. We're just a little concerned with how fast it's going, how quickly, and how the annexation is being pushed so hard by the City of Rock Hill that we really don't have anything to go up against that. Appreciate your time very much. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Drellian. And just for you folks, just so you know, in the citizen comments, we don't want you to think that we're being rude when we don't respond back to you. It's a time for you all to present items that are on your mind and to let us hear that. And we appreciate you coming out and for waiting as long as you did to make your comments known. I'll move now to Councilmember, new non-agenda comments. Mr. Aldette?
Yes, thank you. So March first at six P M., Heckle Boulevard, we're going to have our next Health and Rural Rental Protection Committee meeting. Councilwoman Love and Councilman Winkler, myself, are on the committee. In that committee, we will be talking, or at that committee meeting, we'll be talking about the Catawba Bend Preserve. We'll be doing an update to the community on that. We'll also be updating, there's going to be a March twenty-fifth, there's going to be a data walk, which talks about, and that's actually going to be at three eighty-six East Black Street in Rock Hill. But what it is, is it talks about information on health issues from within the community and that we're going to talk about where to go and et cetera at that meeting. The last thing is that we will have an update by Watts Huckabee in regards to agriculture in the Western County. And that's it. Thank you.
Mr. Murphy?
Yeah, there was a couple of things that I was originally going to pull out of consent agenda just to bring up, to point out. And that is how often we as a county spend money outside of York County. And I understand it's always the best practice to save as much money as possible, but I would really like for us to look at a local bid ordinance or local bid preference, similar to something like the City of Rock Hill offers. Because as we are giving money to businesses here, that money is going towards employees, that money's going towards taxes. As Ms. Love pointed out to me today during one of our three or four different conversations we had, that it almost acts as a rebate back to us. So I'd really like for us as a council to move forward and try to put something together for a local bid preference.
Mr. Roddy?
I would love to follow that comment up. Good luck on that. I've been appreciative ever since I've been on council for about ten years now.
Well, we got more than just one or two now.
Now there's two of us. First, I want to say, I was very disheartened, again, coming up Highway five today, as I noticed all the litter, all the trash that aligns Highway five. And I think one of the gentlemen spoke earlier, when he stood up and gave a presentation on the trash and litter. And he specifically mentioned, I think he even mentioned Highway five. So we need to make sure we're working with staff and getting some of our volunteer groups, making sure we get our public works crews out to visit Highway five. We have to see it. It's atrocious coming up Highway five, right before we get to the Moss Justice Center, the litter, the trash. And it's not just a problem on Highway five, but we're getting calls and seeing this throughout York County. So just wanted to kind of get that back on our radar to help everybody, or remind everybody to help keep York County beautiful, keep it clean, keep it green, let's recycle, let's put, it sounds like I'm talking to, and I know people are watching at home and online, but I remember these sayings from when I was in elementary school, let's put litter in its proper place. You know, I feel like I'm having to say that again on Monday night, because we're seeing a huge increase in litter and trash. And I think we tried to address this a couple of years ago. We even added additional staff to try to help us mitigate some of the trash issues we're seeing. So let's keep that in mind, let's support our many volunteers that's going out, giving their time, effort, and energy to help keep York County clean and beautiful. And I do want to, when you hang around, I have a card for you. The gentleman that just spoke about the south side situation, I do want to connect you with some people that's been talking about this. So definitely hang around, give me a minute.
Ms. Love? Nope. Mr. Hampton? Good. I will let counsel know that the York Tech Committee has decided to come present to us because the Zoom was a little bit of a difficult platform to do it, and they have a lot of good information to share with us. So they'll be on a future council agenda. It will not be tomorrow, so don't log into the Zoom, it won't be there. Do we have a motion for executive session?
We do. We that we go into executive session for the receipt of legal advice relating to a contractual matter regarding GT real estate. And of course, we can't escape without an additional executive session item. Also, we need to receive additional legal advice relating to another contractual matter relating to nuisance property designations.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none. We'll move into executive session and take a five-minute break. Again, do we have any motions?
We have one motion. That motion.
One or two?
Two motions.
No, just one.
We didn't need approval.
We didn't need a motion.
Oh, we didn't. I'm sorry.
Just one motion. We have one motion, and that's to direct management to explore options that we discuss in executive session.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Opposed.
Motion passes. Five to two. Do we have a motion to adjourn? We are adjourned.